Good evening, I would like to call this regular school board meeting to order. The time is 7:01. First quarter of business, the point of belief is?
I do we just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the rule reflect that all members are present with the exception of Josh Pettit. Was this meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was, and as a reminder, it's being recorded.
Welcome, everybody. Is there any public comment?
No.
Moving on to comments by board members and superintendents, the referendum update.
It's turn? Yeah, this is really the, yeah, our deadline, so things are going great. Ryan, first in the site superintendent, says it's nothing that I'm worried about, so that's always good to hear that. Yeah, just wrapping up things, they know they have to be done by Friday, some punchless stuff next week maybe, but then Thursday for open houses, everything's gotta be done and every part out of there, et cetera. So there are some exceptions to outdoor stuff, like the athletic storage shed is just getting started. We knew that all along, your fall project, but it's take a couple of months. The excavation back there behind the current storage shed is complete, and they were digging for footings today. And then the thing that caused a lot of worry in my mind in the timeline was the culinary arts space, the remodeling and the surrounding spaces that were being remodeled during the summer break. Going great, all the subs really have done what they need to do with extra time, extra personnel, and deaths and families and CEOs, you know, owners coming and doing the work. And so it's been really great, could not be happier again with the design by Wolves and by the construction and the implementation of everything, just, I mean, yeah. It's just night and day from the last project.
How's the training going for getting everything up and rolling?
It's done.
There's only one video left, and that was, yeah, there's only one training video left.
And they already, you know, they videoed it, so, and then it's saved somewhere, so it could just be handed down?
Who did the training?
Well, different vendors, just like the specialty folks with whatever equipment do it, and then they do it with appropriate people. I mean, Nick is probably, you know, one of them, has been in most of them, because the majority of them involve the building equipment. So, Nick, do you have a comment on how the training's been going?
Oh, it's been good. A lot of it is high overview, the guys doing the install. Some guys have been good, like getting down in the weeds about maintenance, but a lot of it is gonna be just sifting through manuals to get down to what we need to do for routine maintenance, preventive maintenance for the equipment, but as far as like operations and stuff, they've been great. And at the end of the day, it's all videoed, so we can represent, put it on the shared drive, give access to pertaining operators, whoever it may be.
The other thing is the softball press box, that's gonna be done a couple of weeks or so. They're gonna be framing it, and that'll be done later, but again, not a priority. They've prioritized things very well and sequenced things very well.
Part one is done in the back, straight?
We're still planning on tours for open house, or?
Not for open house, not Thursday, no, I'm still focused on students and their parents. No, we wanted to do a community open house, kind of a showcase, probably gonna be October.
Once the teachers are settled, and perhaps like there's kids work, or, you know?
Or fluid on the machines and equipment that students can then showcase. I envision actually students working, staff, and we're working, producing products, and where the community can walk through.
You think we'll get a lot of requests on open house to have tours through there?
Not sure.
They can just walk through, can't they?
Yeah, it's wide open, it'll be open to the public, that's the, that was the goal again, I said the public's gonna be in here. So, not being intentional at that time with tours. We are with the staff on Tuesday.
Just say if you need any support or from the board or whatever, we could help be there that night and walk people around if need be, I mean, I don't wanna have that night. It's Thursday.
Both are Thursday, nevermind, we're not doing that.
You can volunteer me, I can't stand watching that wishful offense. It's triple offense.
Any other questions?
Is that a motion?
At least training.
Middle school, that's going well?
Yeah, it's done, actually, we're about a week ahead of schedule. March, much to Martha's delight, because I was causing a lot of consternation with all the rooms getting done so that housekeeping could get in and finish the rooms. So, the middle school gym is repaired, it's gonna look weird, it's plywood for now. It's gonna look weird for a little while, but all things considered, timeline, et cetera, and not displacing physical education classes and some volleyball a little bit.
Which gym, new or the older?
The older, the main big gym, when the roofers came in. After the rooftop unit was put in, they didn't seal it up right, got a terrible rain. It only rained on it for like an hour, I mean, it cleansed up right away, but it's a real experience with hardwood and water, it's not good. So, the good thing is mint roofing, we had about a $20,000 project with us is fully paying for that $220,000.
Same thing happened with the new gym, when that was built, it rained.
So they're much, you know, I respect that, they said, you know what, it's our fault, we'll take care of it. Built the first installment, a two-part installment. Yeah, so it won't look great for a year, which, but we've already talked to Chance about putting up signs and just, because our communities are coming in, they're gonna be like, what? It's gonna be obvious, and just signs about what's going on. But it's playable, just won't look great, it's safe, and we're gonna get a new gym floor, but not till next summer. Other questions? And we're still under budget and continuing to be able to add wishlist items, especially because of interest, large sum of interest we're earning. I think it's 1.1 million-ish, right Jen, as of last check?
Awesome.
All right, next order is the WASB Fall Regional Meeting, October 23rd, that's in the nominee.
Yep.
Let's just kind of put it on your radar, it's in the evening, it's at the, where's the old alehouse?
Yeah.
Where was last year?
It took place last year for Dave Drake, a lot of coffee.
Yeah.
He had to shut him down.
I can go.
Yeah, I'll go.
She would need to know for sure, definite, by next month's meeting, but, yeah, you know now.
So Derek, are you for sure yes?
I can go too.
Seven o'clock?
It's check-in at six, dinner at 6:30, and the meeting is at seven.
Last year we took a van, it was really nice.
Okay, Brad, did you say yes to it?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Dave, you said yes?
I'm a maybe right now.
You're gonna drive the van?
Yeah, put me as a maybe, and then we'll follow up next month. You're a good van driver, fantastic.
Do we use a wrestling van?
It's not so bad.
Okay, moving on to scheduled presentations by guests and staff members. We have the summer projects update with building supervisor Nick Yoder, ground supervisor Matt Com, and housekeeping supervisor Martha.
Good evening. So, an overview of what I've been up to. Bigger projects, I got a DOJ grant for digital mapping through the entire district. So they'll come through with a 3D scanner, scan the whole district, room numbers, equipment, all of that. I'm gonna utilize that, that's mainly for first responders, but I'm gonna embed that into the asset management software that I'm also bringing in, so that'll allow us to write work orders, track work orders, kind of similar to what IT does right now. It'll also allow us to produce preventive maintenance tasks, to bring some of the lower level stuff in-house. Like an example would be our water heaters. It's a domestic water heater, just a larger scale, so we can safely do that preventive maintenance in-house, supposed to pay in a union shop to do that work. So, that's the main goal, we're brightly as well as adding efficiency and order to all the work orders that are coming in. And like I said, it'll blend well with the mapping, getting all the assets, depreciating assets, capital planning, everything goes along with that. Inventory will be the next step, seeing what we have on the shelf, what we need, what we're burning through, so we buy ahead, things like that. A lot of referendum stuff, just little things here and there with the project work, supporting market and head custodians any way I can. Kyle and Jerry have been doing a great job stepping in and filling those gaps as needed. With the referendum stuff, I was able to purchase some equipment for the middle school boiler loop system. We need filtration, so I added side screen filtration as well as added expansion tanks. We have a mass swing pressure and temperature, so we just burned out a pump, a circ pump, and part of that is because as temperature rises, our pressure goes up and adversity drops, and so we're cavating pumps. So I was able to, with the excess money, I was able to purchase expansion tanks, so I can pipe all that in and help ease the burden on those pumps and keep that pressure a little bit flatter. With our asset manager, building management system, going through and setting the schedule for like a year, when we have holidays, events, days off, right, we're burning energy to have an equipment running, so utilizing the asset management to the best we can. Beyond that, and this is all thanks to your guys' decision to split these off, and these guys doing a great job allowing me to dig in and do more hands-on work. So just as far as hands-on work that are done, we got a V88 at the middle school, had a bad actuator, bad, that stuck bouncing out, fix that. Just swap out a LED light instead of hiring out, duct sensors, V8s. Dishwasher work, we had a scale up at the middle school, tore it all apart, cleaned it all, got it up and running. We had a lot of actuators, a lot of little things in the HVAC, but again, being able to get out in the field and do that hands-on work as opposed to hiring it out wouldn't be possible with these guys doing the work that they've done. So I just wanna thank them and their staff, especially the head custodians and everything they've been doing to help turn these schools around for the summer. They've really allowed me to do hands-on work and lower cost and maintain the building. Beyond that, I mean, I could rattle off a ton of little things, but these are kind of the overview of the bigger things. Is the referendum, the DOJ grant mapping, and then the asset management. About 10 to 12 hours and online training to work with the software. Had a positive project for the next two weeks, because I'll be sitting at the high school trying to help wrap that project up. Other than that, if anyone wants to say more details or questions, feel free to ask.
Have to figure out the basement here. I must be the only one that notices, but it's musty, 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 worse than it's been for a long time.
I haven't got a chance to ozone but one section of this area, increased dehumification. I know there is some sensitivity when it comes to respiratory issues here. We can run ozone constantly, but I need to get with that person and set that ozone up and make sure that she's comfortable with it, but it can be better, and it will be better, so.
Nick, it's my pet peeve. Because it is an issue for the people that are working.
It's a great torch to carry and keep, yeah, because we've talked about it often, we're here every day.
And the guys that come here every day don't speak to it, yeah.
Talked a lot about HVAC, obviously it's a big part of what you do. Maybe the board, just talk to the board a little bit about Terry Freeze, our HVAC consultant, and the work he's done, maybe.
Right, Terry's a massive asset to the district, not only for commissioning, but just having somebody else to bounce things off of when it comes to HVAC, as well as the automation side of things. So with Terry's help, we were able to source a gateway. So, there's different types of controllers in these units throughout the district, and the Johnson control units are programming shipped from Johnson. So, not only are UHL, who does our service work and manages our BAS, they can't access that. Well, Terry called the gateway, so now I can access it and actually see the points of what's happening and programming. So Terry is unbelievable when it comes to that, on top of the engineering aspect, the focus on energy, recovering money from all these projects. Yeah, I can't speak highly enough about Terry Freeze.
And in these two referendum projects, excavation was the number one, you know, cost, and second was HVAC. Then it's just, you know, we quickly realized HVAC is very technical, most of it's hidden. If it's hooked up right and working right, is, I'd say it's working right, it's not, you know, there's just a lot of checking. So to have him as our watchdog and our advocate, our owner rep, has been worth every penny. We just continue, and then, yeah, focus on energy, where he's getting those rebates and getting money back, he does all, takes care of all that, yeah, and has worked closely, you know, Greg, you know, Nick. Can't say enough about him, but, okay, good to hear.
Anything else? Awesome, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Well, it's like Nick said, this is, I definitely am sure when you split it into three, and I think that was the best decision for the district, you cut it down, because we all get to specialize in our area, work well together, that was, very happy with that, you know. Busy summer, a lot of little things for us, but it's a lot. Spent about probably, I'd say, well over 90% of our summer at the high school, just how it's been with construction. Lot of working with market, you know, every time there's an excavation, find something underground, we gotta find out what that thing is, it's pulling up blueprints, you know, it's banned and it's old, you know, whatever it is, just zeroing it out. So, for so many favors as Kurt and Ryan does for us, they call, you gotta run. They were, they're definitely great guys. So, yeah, I mentioned we did some landscaping, did new plants, pulled out some of that old stuff, took out all that plastic, I even put metal in, aluminum. No sharp edges, no kid's gonna get hurt, it'll bend before it has a sharp edge, so it's a product that I like, it's pretty safe. Trying to put some love on the old pike racks, you know, they're pretty tough. I'm hoping, talked to brokerizer a little bit, and I'm hoping once she gets her shop up and running, maybe we can get the kids to start making those for us, making some kind of cool panther ones. And then use that glue you guys picked out from the middle school, because that turned out pretty good. Did a bunch of reseeding on the playground, did have to excavate quite a bit, spammed some bream into the soil. Could figure out now why grass never grows there, turned out pretty good. Middle school, we did the seal coating at the middle school bus garage, bus barn. We did a very large repair, but a very crucial area at the handicap parking. We do use a lot more salt on our handicap spaces, so that's been pitted. I think in about three years, we have started having chunks come out, so just bit the bullet this year. With this being the lightest seal coating cost, year just got it fixed. We had, we painted the middle school valleys here just this week, got rid of that red, cleaned them up, sanded them down, and primed them, they're pretty good, I think, I like them. That's kind of my three-year plan now, after cleaning them up, we'll see if we're gonna need to do some work on those things, some concrete. I'll get that in my plan for three years. This is what, yeah, we've got the fence back up for JV baseball, now the soccer, our C soccer's not there, we're gonna have to move up plugs in the ground for interference, they're happy about that, so. Now we go to the high school, that's been a busy place. Seven on seven, of course, you know, they, oh, no, they do, it's weekly garbage, weekly painting, weekly. You know, it was a great, it was two little bumps at the beginning, but I think that was a great thing to happen for the school. See all the kids out there from other schools. Actually, went there the one night and kind of just, kind of neat hearing kids from other school going, oh, this would be nice, you know? It's finally, it's nice to hear that. Late summer soccer actually grew, so we were just gonna use the turf and the practice soccer field, but they had so many kids, we had to find the old one at the middle school, so I mean, that's a, so there's another weekly painting field. That's good though. Batter's eye, we got that up, did that on a Saturday, kind of windy. The higher you got, the harder it was, but we got it out. Did that cleanup behind the three-car garage, I thought that would be in the afternoon, that was two days, so. But we got it all cleaned up and everything out there. Working on an outdoor adventure space in the woods. They used to have a space just off, the teachers went at the high school along the fence line, and actually with construction, they lost their home and they kind of scattered out through the woods. So, we had this nice area in the woods, so in June, before the budget started, we started going through it, the kids are just kind of leveling it, letting the grass grow through, moving some trees. She'll have a nice space, it'll be a constant little growing thing. When I get her to weld feet on the bottom of the old benches from the front of the high school, so she can have benches out in her area. They'll take a booth, that'll suffice to be a nice little storage shed for her, they're not big, that needs just a little bit of work. She's super excited about it, so totally working on that. Cross-country, we knew when, we knew when we put the turf in, it'd be a year or two of change around trails, and so this year, when they ran their twilight run, we ran a whole different kind of holding section, so we're gonna do some trail repairs here next week, just, they said it's fine, I don't think it's fine. They're okay with, we won't have grass, we'll seed it, you know, in the spring, but there are just a few spots I don't feel comfortable with. You know, I want it to be rather one, I want it flat, so, once again, you know, changes, just adapting. Spent a lot of time watering, we had the food shelf pickup this year, that was new. I only had to do it four times, it'll be six times next summer. Couple guys take a couple vans, go pick up items from the food shelf and bring them back to the middle school. I will say, you don't realize how much is in the press box, so we have to go up another steps with all of my subjects out. Got that all cleaned out and everything, but I had a good, good busy summer, a lot of semi, I'm loading, moving IT from middle school to the high school, all this smart work, so, a lot of all different things. I will say though, Tony Bevo from the bus garage, you see him, thank him, I mean, he really came to us, he's mowing three days a week, the elementary school is the only one that's, the front's only twice, or once a week, no. Mowing twice a week, some spots three, but the front elementary school is the only yard we haven't had to mow twice a week. So, Tony's been bailing us out, mowing that second mowing, so, we've been very lucky. Took out, another thing to do is, Justin took out 28 loads of brush out of the middle school woods. It's monumental for us, because we knew what was there, you probably wouldn't notice. But it was 28 loads out to start, and so before the snow comes and the grounds froze, did another 340 out there, so. So we can do that, clean that wood up and get it looking good too, so, any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Good job.
I'm sorry, I didn't have your first today, I hope so you're having patience with me today. But everything a little bit cleaner, you know, in the schools, everything is go well. You know about the construction, it's making a little crazy for us, you know, working extra, but I think everything is really well. Elementary school is done, completed, and middle school is about, you know, almost done there. The construction done, you know, last week, but everything is almost done there. High school, still having the common area, you already walking over there, you see. I try and, you know, these guys to done, you know, with the all the equipment, you know, the furniture, but they still not moving, I hope so they can done tonight, and that way, that way I can done by this week, tomorrow, Friday. And I think everything is well, you know, my crew doing a really good job, you know, they, they doing really well. It's only I having short people, you know, I hope so, you know, I can get more people, you know, can help me, because right now I focus mostly, you know, for cleaning too, and still, you know, to do my own job, you know, than checking my emails or whatever need to be good, you know, the supervisor. But the most bigger issues I want to bring into the board attention is our equipment. We really not having really good equipment, you know, we bringing, you know, some equipment is really badly, some equipment, you know, supposedly, you know, a niche building need to have in that own, and sometimes we need to bring in building to the building. That is because I wanna request, you know, you can help me with that, getting, you know, a new equipment. All the schools, the school keeping in spaces and remodeling, which is great, but we needing a investment in a new equipment to keep it looking good for the students and for the community. I made at least, I made a list what we need to, what it is we cause. You know, I having a list for everyone can see, you know, how much I need. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's probably about to. Yeah, sorry. I making only 10.
So I'd ask Martha to make this list, when she had said this in our last meeting, you know, prioritize, and then talk to Jen and see what would fit within the referendum. Money per our resolution, right, elementary and high school, probably, for the middle school.
Yeah.
Tougher, but definitely, whenever somebody comes with a need, give us a list, prioritize it, and get what we can and get that up to speed. So, we are administration, Jen is.
So, so this would fit within our referendum funding?
It would.
Why try it? Not Nilfisk or Tennant?
It is because it's the best, you know, equipment.
Think so?
Yes, right and better. Yeah, the other kind is broken most time, you know, wherever I have it right now. Every month, you know, I need to look, you know, for somebody can look here, you know, because it's broken. You know, and I invested more money in fixing, right now, and it's really old. It's one of those equipments, you know, having, you know, 30 years old, 20 years old. I think it features too for all the equipments too, I don't know if you interested, see, but.
I know a little bit about this market, we have a division in our company that is solely in floor care.
Okay.
And we invested heavily in Tennant because of maintenance costs.
Oh.
Just a thought.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just curious.
I like it because it's white and better, and clean and better. I don't know, it's different, you know?
Yeah.
Opinions, you know, you can have.
So you've used both?
Yeah, yes. You have any questions? Uh, you have any questions?
Maybe just let the board know how many staff you have.
Right now I have in two hour. Uh, one person, you know, uh, started two weeks ago and she's working only for four days and taking the five. Um, and then she not show up, no call, no nothing. That's because I always having problems, you know, with the with the people too. I don't get in good people.
So how many openings do you think you have now?
I still have one, yeah.
And then we have a staff member that's on um, a long-term leave, so technically right now she's down two.
Yeah, exactly.
Mm-hmm, but we have one open position to hire.
Yeah, and the school was sudden, you know, I needed somebody can help me. Yep. Have any more questions?
Next one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just for your information too, um, Nick, you know, with with buildings as privacy himself. Uh, but he's kind of the head, that kind of is the head custodian also right now at the elementary and Jerry High School. And Kyle at the middle school. So there's a staff of three for buildings and Max, same thing as a staff of three for grounds himself. Eric and Logan.
I didn't mention by name, but I want to. Dwayne at the elementary school has been a massive help over there allowing me to do this type of stuff. He's really stepped up above what he's there to do and just he will get it done no matter what and he's a massive asset at elementary school.
Thank you.
I have a presentation. Can I do it? Pull that up on here or do you want me to plug it in?
Um, I I can since the laptop's not hooked up.
Next up is staff review. The human resource director, Michaela Murtha.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so last year is the first year that I started talking to you guys about the hiring update. Um, and we did a pretty deep overview. Um, starting from twenty fourteen and on. Um, so this year I decided to condense it. Um, and make it, I guess, less. Uh, but you still get uh the overall uh, information that you'd like. If you wanna click on the next page. Um, again, this is the overview. So we started off um, last year with twenty fourteen, fifteen school years, so I just did the last um, six years. Um, and if you recall in my overview last year, um, we had talked about how uh COVID played a huge role in our turnover and retention rates. And that I was assuming that that would probably steady off and then hopefully dip a little bit lower. Um, and based on my data, that is um, true. So right now it's kind of even. Um, however, we have seen a very big decline in the amount of teachers that have resigned. Last year it was eleven teachers that resigned and this year it was six. Uh, we are seeing a larger um, amount of support staff leaving. Um, but again, it's the climate of um, the career. Um, and so many places are now offering those larger pays, so we have to be more competitive with that um, in the private sector. Um, but to go over twenty-three, twenty-four data, we had six teachers resign, twelve support staff. We terminated three, now four as of today, support staff. Uh, we have three teachers um, retired, one administrator and then five support staff. So our turnover rate is at eleven percent, retention rate is eighty-nine, which is pretty flat the last few years. Um.
Can I ask one question on that?
Yeah, you bet.
Um, just cause you mentioned teachers versus total staff.
Yeah.
What is, do you have the retention rate of teachers over those?
I don't. Uh, I did last year, but I didn't include it on here. Um, the retention rate for teachers this year, if I just do rough math, it's like ninety-five percent or so. Um, this year, whereas last year, just again, rough math is like eighty-five percent.
I think that would be helpful if you tally each year, cause that's kind of the work, our workhorses.
Mm-hmm.
Then we have, there are professionals, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
So make sure we're taking care of them.
I think they have separate challenges that play a role in the retention rates, for sure.
Yeah, definitely. And last year I did break those out by um, jobs, by buildings. But this year I decided just to condense it. But I do have that information. If you'd like it, I can for sure get it to you.
Interesting.
Cause I think support staff is, I mean, just always gonna have more turnover.
Yeah, it is.
Pay level.
Exactly. Um, so um, last year I started the onboarding data, just so you guys have a good idea. Um, the HR department is technically one and a half people. Um, Megan is the assistant HR um, person and she's technically half-time between HR and the DL. Um, so between the two of us, this year we hired ninety-one workers. Um, and for reference, each worker, if I were to average it out, is about an hour um, of our time that we are spending with them. Um, during the summer, we're mostly busy hiring. Uh, usually I'm spending forty-five minutes to an hour one-on-one with each staff member that we hire. Game workers um, are a little bit less, I would say maybe thirty minutes. Um, but average, between the time that it takes sitting with them one-on-one, putting all of their data in, checking them down for docu sent paperwork, all of that, it's about an hour, hour and a half per person. So we are down a little bit and that's because we broke off from the central rec board. That was a lot of game workers. So um, we are seeing a decline in the amount of workers hired because we're no longer hiring central rec. I did put together exit interviews, so I do offer all staff that have left the opportunity to meet with me one-on-one. And if they choose not to, there's a survey that I send out. So this year we had nineteen people uh, respond to my exit interview, either in person or the survey. And so the first question that I ask is rank one to five, one being well, five being high, all of these different categories. So uh, it's admin, benefits, compensation, uh, the school board, the necessary resources to do my job. Um, I can even read that far, but you can read it. Um, and pleased to say that um, the majority said that we were uh, high, so it would be four and five. The only areas that were average um, was evaluation system, which we are working with Dion um, to enhance uh, the necessary, I'm sorry, clear job expectations and then the necessary resources to do my job. Um, so with the clear job expectations, I saw that that was mostly support staff. Um, and because there are some departments that are usually having high turnover, uh, we will be working with their supervisors to talk about having clear job expectations for their staff. Um, necessary resources to do their job. Again, that's kind of on a more department level and something that I'll be looking into too. If we continue with the exit interviews, I wrote it down by the top reasons for leaving SEC. Uh, twenty-five percent said it was due to retirement. Thirty percent was personal and family and then specifically noted a work schedule of hours, a commute and workload. And with the workload, it's more the teachers, um, feeling burnout. If anybody knows anything about education, it's getting crazy. Um, and people are feeling the burnout more. We talked about it a lot at all of my conferences, um, making sure that we are retaining top talent and um, how to get uh, younger folks into um, education. So that's where that came from. Other job opportunities was forty-one percent. Again, that comes more from support staff than teachers. And then relocation, there was just one percent.
Uh, at some of the conferences that you've attended, what what's kind of the working theory on best approaches to combat educational burnout?
Yeah, so they are coming up with, actually it's in legislation right now, um, to offer certain programs for schools where DPI will essentially fund the education for whoever we select. So they're doing it in Tennessee and Nevada right now, where they bring it back down to the public schools and they offer like an internship. Um, and so each school would be allowed X amount of people to spend off to college. And then DPI will pay for their education, basically for them to become teachers. Um, so that is in the works, so that's one thing. Um, just making sure that the, how do I wanna say it? There is a stigma for an education. So trying to combat that, having teachers say, I love my job, um, having intro education classes at high school. Lots of those kind of things. Um, and that's what we're trying to do. Uh, in the past, I would say after Act Ten, uh, that's when the stigma kind of grew. And now just learning to combat that, having positive conversations surrounding education and getting into the education workforce, offering internships, really growing our own and having those are your own programs.
Yeah, I'd say culture and compensation are big ones and then well, preventing burnout too, just um, getting more people in the program would provide more subs. There used to be lots of subs and staff wasn't having the cover and give up the prep each nearly every day to do that. That was a burnout concern as well. So you think, oh, attracting new teachers, how can that help retention? That's that's how.
So I put together kind of a Wordle. Um, I asked, what do you see as the strengths of SEC? And as you can see, community, students, staff, support, kids, administration, those are all of the um, highlights. Um, but there's a lot of really positive words in there, especially for an exit interview. I was surprised, honestly, when I saw this Wordle. Um, if you look through, there's very little negative comments at all, which was nice to see. And then I asked, what constructive comments do you have for making SEC a better place to work? Again, it's staff, um, behaviors, feel is a big one. A lot of people use, I feel like, and so that's where that kind of came from. Um, people, work, needed, para, those are the bigger words that's in there.
Michaela, sure. Um, a lot of this data with the admin.
Mm-hmm.
Spring?
Yeah.
In June, maybe?
Yes.
But yeah, behaviors, uh, no surprise probably to anyone in the room, but just, you know, behaviors are have become more and more challenging. Um, so there's uh definitely a focus on that, uh, with the admin team and and working with staff on student behaviors. It's never gonna be perfect perhaps, but we want to at least make it better and they feel more supported and more tools in their tool belt for um, addressing student behaviors.
And I will say, the last few years we have gone uh, down in our para support. And this year, we have one para slot to fill. So um, that will hopefully combat some of the behaviors is because we aren't hopefully going to be fully stacked. Uh, so that'll help as well. So then through J A Counter, who's our broker, uh, they allowed us to do a value perception survey. So out of our two hundred and eighty-two staff, we had a hundred and one responses, which is huge. Um, we have just under two hundred staff members that are on our benefits, so really that's a very large percentage that completed this survey. Um, we asked, what category best describes your age, which is, I mean, pretty common for the field that we're in, thirty to forty-nine was the majority. We asked, how long have they been with SEC? And as you can see, there's a wide variety, but overall eight to fifteen years was the highest. And so we asked, how likely is it that you would recommend the school district of St. Chris Central as a place to work? And our NPS score was sixty-seven, which is borderline, you know, I mean, outstanding, but it's borderline gold class. So we had seventy-two promoter promoters, twenty-five passives and four retractors. So that's huge. That's really awesome. Overall, how satisfied are you with the benefits package from SEC? Seventy-four said very satisfied, twenty-seven said somewhat satisfied, and then zeros for the rest. So overall, our staff is satisfied um, with our benefits, which is awesome to hear too, because we really try. Overall, how satisfied are you with your employee benefits options? This is from a zero to five scale and we ranked four point five two. So there was just one response that ranked us a one. Otherwise, it was either average or outstanding. What additional benefits would you like the employer to offer? Um, surprisingly, pet insurance was pretty high up there, so that's fun. Um, but additional mental health support, which we have been working all school year, um, to get staff more support. And this year we're rolling out a new program through our EAP called Elevate, which allows staff twenty face-to-face visits with a mental health counselor every year. Um, and that's not just our employees, that's their families too. Um, we're seeing it with our health insurance, the costs for mental health has increased a lot. And we have a lot of staff and the families that are on um, mental health meds. I believe it was sixty percent. Is that what they said you were meaning? Sixty percent or something? That was on mental health prescriptions. So, and that was on our overall population.
I, yeah, I think you said sixty percent of our staff are using mental health.
Not just staff, everybody on the plane. So that could be children, that could be spouses, that could be. It's not just staff, I'm sorry, I'm a fool. Uh, but sixty percent of the population that is on our health insurance is utilizing some sort of mental health, either prescription, they're going to see a counselor, they're utilizing some sort of mental health support through their health insurance. Um, whole life, yeah.
We had a CISA presentation on kind of the world of HR and benefits. Pet insurance was mentioned there as one of the
Yeah.
hotspots. And this wasn't just education, this is all things, but young people are choosing not to have kids and their kids are their pets.
Yeah. Well, and that's another thing that was talked about it on my conferences is people are choosing not to get married and have kids until they're in their mid-thirties. And so like you said, their pets are their kids. And so they're more more focused on having those alternate insurances rather than focusing on their health, their dental, their life, all of that. Another high one, uh, high ranking one was the whole life insurance. And so we are working with J A Counter to see if we can offer that to staff as well. We asked, what is their impression of SEC's benefits plan compared to other employers? And we ranked very, very high. Excellent and above average. Um, we only had six responses that said NA, which basically means that they didn't mind answer the question or they're not on our benefits. Um, and we had one person that ranked us below average.
Yeah, I don't know compared to what? That person, what are you comparing us to?
So just some updates. Um, I spoke to it earlier, but we are expanding our EAP to include that Elevate program. Um, and that's based on the perception survey as well as some of my conversations that I have with staff. Um, so we're allowing up to twenty face-to-face counseling sessions. They also get six through our EAP and then an additional two through. It's technically through our life insurance. It's like a value add is what they call it. Um, so really they'll have twenty-eight face-to-face visits with counselors. Um, they have check-ins with case manager, personalized treatment plans. I also created a human resources webpage called the Hub. This is where they can get anything and everything related to their employment. Um, our handbook, uh, benefits, payroll, if they want to change their direct deposit, that's all on there. Um, so that's been a really great tool for staff too.
That that's huge. And I, you know, I remember when I was hired, mountains of paperwork and and the different places and it was kind of in one spot, but um, you know, when you said you spent an hour with each employee, I I, you know, it used to be much higher.
Mm-hmm.
Because of that, because of this, it's not.
It used to, it used to be, if anybody remembers Elaine, um, it was two, three, four hours. It used to, it used to be, if anybody remembers Elaine, um, it was two, three, four hours. Um, I mean, it was just insane and that was just the amount of paperwork. And so we're, we're trying to be paper-free as much as physically possible and we're trying to simplify the process for our new staff so that they're not overwhelmed. I get it, I remember being fresh out of college, not knowing anything about benefits and paperwork and all of that. So just trying to make the process simpler for them, um, is huge. And then having the ability to sit on their couch, look at their phone, and they can scroll through all of this on their own time is also been very beneficial for staff. Um, we also have an SEC online store for staff. Um, so all new staff got a fifty dollar off coupon code that they can use for our online store. Um, and then we made that available for all staff too. With that, we are handing out employee swag. So there is a employee highlight program that I'm going to be doing, and that's more to interact staff with the community so that they can get to know who's in our classrooms with their kids. Um, and so we're doing an employee's swag. So staff have the opportunity to nominate other staff just by sharing like their personal stories. Like, hey, so-and-so helped me out, they did a great job, they went above and beyond. Uh, and so when staff get recognized like that, they'll be entered for employee's swag. But every single staff member is gonna be highlighted at some point.
We talked about the new staff too, just the onboarding and
Yeah.
and swag that they were provided this year.
Yeah, so new staff got a bag, um, school supplies, a coffee mug, a picnic blanket kind of thing, an umbrella, some post-it notes. Um, we really tried to emphasize SEC swag in giving our staff, our new staff, um, these, I guess, belongings, just to make them feel welcome. You know, the younger staff really enjoy having those swag items. Um, and so that's something that we did. We also took them on a bus tour all around the district, which is something that's new. D's really done a great job in making them feel welcome, um, and partnering with the mentors to, um, really make our program grow, which has been nice. So my goals, um, for next year would be, um, to make sure that we are providing additional mental health support tools for our staff. Um, with the Elevate program, it's great because it does go back home as well to stu-, uh, to really our students, um, and children, spouses, and our staff. Um, and so utilizing that Elevate program is going to be an awesome tool for staff, but even going further beyond that too. Um, continuing to engage staff in their benefit offerings, that was another big ticket item in my, um, survey that I send out to staff. So I have a monthly newsletter called The Panther Press, and we're gonna have a benefit spotlight in there. So we're gonna highlight all of the different benefits that we offer, uh, and some of the value adds too. On the PD Day, I'll be talking to staff one-on-one in small groups um, about their benefit offerings, all of the value adds, how they can best use their benefits. Um, offering additional supplemental benefits for staff. So again, with the pet insurance, the cancer insurance, um, whole life insurance, really working with Jay Counter to see what benefits we can offer staff. Um, also providing them with retirement financial resources. Um, Andy Rennick at Jay Counter, he's been awesome. He comes at least twice a year and meets with staff one-on-one for, oh gosh, he's usually with staff for forty-five minutes to two hours. Um, and it's a free service available to staff. Um, so kind of expanding that to include WBA and then WRS as well. The, um, increase in playing engagement through the staff highlight program. Um, and then increasing my visibility within the district. So usually, I'm at each of the buildings, I would say at least once a month. Um, really, and that's on my schedule at least once a month, but I would say I'm there at least once a week. Um, and so increasing that more, having more drop-ins with staff, checking in with them, um, that would be one of my goals. Any questions? Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Two of the financial reports.
All right, so the bank account balances as of July thirty-first. The Citizens State Bank checking with a balance of two million eight hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Money market account, twelve thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. Fund forty-six was fifty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Suicide prevention, five thousand one hundred thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. Debt service, one hundred sixty-eight thousand eight eighty-one and eighty-eight cents. Referendum account, nine hundred thirty-four thousand fifty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Uh, the second referendum account, three million seven hundred and fifty thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and nine cents. Debt service, one hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents for a total balance of seven million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Jeff made the motion.
Sorry.
Dave second, any discussion? All in favor? Both, motion carries. Next up is consideration of consent agenda. Under that, we have, um, regular modification requests for five full-time and five part-time virtual courses to enroll in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. And then we have the agreement for physical therapy with Palpen Woodville Area School Districts and School District of Somerset. Other consent, it's like the whole.
Motion to approve?
Eric made the motion, Dave second, any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Both, all right, motion carries. Moving on to administrative reports, we have Leah Volker. I'm Director of People Services here to present on the annual summary report on bullying behavior trends and also the twenty-three, twenty-four seclusion and restraint.
So yeah, every year you get to hear these, um, reports from me. Um, first of all, over is the bullying report.
Hold on, you didn't get punched this year, right?
No.
Yes.
No, not on me. Um, so bullying, that's a, that's a pretty big term that people use, but this report really co-, um, covers um, state statute and our policy, uh, definition, which is a deliberate and int-, um, intentional behavior, which, um, is intended to cause fear, intimidation, or harm. Um, and it has to be repeated and it has to involve, involve an imbalance of power in order to be included as and found to be an actual act of bullying. Um, there's, there is the four kinds of bullying that we have, the physical, verbal, social, and cyber bullying that all go into this report. Um, all complaints of bullying that are reported to our principals are, um, investigated. And then they will be determined if they fit this, this definition. And this year, we have zero, so we have zero reports to, uh, or incidents to report for you. Um, and then you, you can see the trend, I think over the last five years, there's been one incident that is actually in that definition. I mean, a lot of that is credited to our counseling staff who spends a lot of time, um, doing some lessons at the elementary and the middle school, at the middle school levels on bullying and what it is and, um, and addressing and how to incorporate it. That's the bullying report, any questions on that one? Okay, the second one you get from me is the seclusion and restraint. Um, I think I always like to start this one by practicing that seclusion and restraint are legal. They are legal to use in school districts, um, but we use them as only as the last resort. Um, and this, and anybody who is actually conducting a seclusion or restraint is trained um, using Nonviolent Crisis Intervention. Um, it's a program that we, um, train people in yearly. So, um, if you, if there's a student who needs that, we have a team of people in each building. Typically, that would be your principals, um, paraprofessionals, or special education teachers, but we do have some genit country squads. Um, I also like to put a caveat, because you get, you get data from over, um, several years on this report. And this report can really vary depending upon the needs of the children that we have in special ed um, and their enrollment we get and the type of student we get. Um, but again, I think it's important to caveat it with saying that we use it as a last resort. Um, so this year, we, um, seclusion, I, just the definition we use as seclusion is involuntary confinement of a student in a place, that means you have to physically stop them from leaving. Um, it doesn't mean they're alone in a room or sitting there to do work or things like that. You have to physically hold a door or put your hand in front of them so they are not allowed to leave in order for it to be considered a seclusion. Um, and if a seclusion is used with a student, um, with disabilities, it is written into the ADP for that student. Um, and a restraint, again, is the immobilization of the student's torso, uh, arms, legs, or head. Uh, and again, those, we use the CPI, um, procedures that we're training them to do that. So this year, we, um, will report ten, um, ten incidents of seclusion, uh, with four of which were students with disabilities. There was one incident of a student who was not on an IEP of a seclusion at the elementary school. That student later became an IEP, so just to note that. Um, we had twenty, um, incidents of, uh, restraint this year. Five of those were with students with disabilities, um, and those five accounted for all of the incidents. So there was no, um, non-physical students in that. Um, and then to break it down, you can see by building, I have to break it down for you by building. The majority of those take place at the, um, middle school, I mean, at the elementary, um, and only one of those took place at the high school. That was a district at the high school. Any questions on that?
What, what happens following one of these reports?
Sure, so at, by law, the parent has to be notified the day of, they have to receive a ri-, report after every incident. Um, if it's a student that is, has disability, that you're going to use it frequently, after the second time you use a, or a stranger's seclusion with that student, you have to meet with, the IEP team has to come together and discuss it. Um, and then a plan is developed so that it, it is not that we have to meet every single, every, after every second time we use it with that student. Uh, we make, we review the plan and we make sure that it's properly documented in the ADP that we will be using that. Parents are always notified and they get it in writing itself. Other questions?
Thanks, Leah.
Next, we will move on to the key work of our school board, students, staff, and community recognition. And Dave, something to leave it for Josh.
So the Food for Kids Program would like to thank Matt Tom, Eric Rogan Call, Logan Fee for their assistance keeping the Food for Kids Program running over the summer. And the board would like to recognize Tanya Trump. Tanya, you have no idea how much you mean to our district. You help in the registration process for all activities and school-related items does not go unnoticed. You have also done an amazing job with the transition of administrators in the building as well. Keep up the amazing work.
Moving on to core agenda items, first is summary of Fund Thirty-Nine Debt Service Prepayments.
Okay, so you should have the exhibit in your packet. Um, first, I kind of wanted to go through like the reasons why we started prepaying debt and why we continue to, to do that. So this started with our region benefit committee meeting, uh, many years ago, probably ten years ago, meeting and talking about staff salaries and how could we formulate a plan that we would be able to pass an operational referendum knowing that it would be several years, you know, of, of bumps ups? I think we started originally at with a five-year plan and then ultimately ended up with a ten-year plan. So we started using the prepayment of debt as like a long-range planning tool to, I guess, inflate our mill rate a little bit by prepaying debt, prepaying some of this debt off so that in the next year, we would have more available to us. So that was kind of how we started. And then as we've continued on, we wanted to keep that mill rate stable because now we've passed an operational levy that will go for the full ten years. And so the goal is we keep, to keep our mill rate at that nine dollars and twenty cents because we don't want to, in any given year, have it drop way down and then the next year have it go way up and up and up again because of this operational levy being, um, phased in over that time period. So by keeping it a little bit higher, then we can keep that more, a little more stable for the taxpayers. So the other piece of this that, after talking to Brian Brewer, we decided not to put a dollar amount to it. But each year, when we make a debt prepayment, in the following year, we receive more in state aid because we receive state aid on that amount that we prepaid. So if we prepaid, you know, three million dollars, we'll say, which is our estimate for this coming year, then next year, we will get about sixty percent of that back in state aid. So it's allowing us to continue that prepayment because if we want to make the prepayment, we want to have had that extra aid coming in. So it kind of is building on itself as we move along here. And so you can see here, um, what we, we started in twenty nineteen, twenty, and we prepaid about five hundred thousand dollars worth of debt and we saved about eighteen thousand dollars. At that point in time, it wasn't the purpose to save money. The purpose was to try to create that space for an operational referendum. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, you can see we prepaid about one point one million and saved more, a hundred and forty-three thousand on that issue. So the interest rate on that one was a little higher and it probably was gonna be out there for longer than that original one. Um, so both of those came along. And then, once we got to twenty-two, twenty-three, now we were, we had already passed the referendum. And so we paid off, it was almost like instead of borrowing money, we just paid it. Uh, there was a short-term borrow in there for like three months or something, but then we went ahead and paid that amount early. So that was hard to quantify, like what that interest savings was because we never really had the long-term debt for that. Um, but overall, and looking at this, including, um, what we're projecting for twenty-four, twenty-five with a three million dollar, um, prepayment of debt and almost two million dollars of interest savings, we're looking at over a thirty percent savings. So we've paid twelve point six million, but we've saved almost four million in the process. So basically, by paying the twelve and a half million today, the taxpayers don't have to pay sixteen and a half million later on down the road. And then during this time, we're also receiving that state aid. Now you could say, well, that's a wash because either we get it now or we get it later. But that's also one of the things that's kicking in and helping us to prepay more and still keep that levy rate down closer to that nine dollars and twenty cents.
What would our mill rate be if we didn't additional, let be this additional three million?
I, I didn't run that, but I wanna say when I was crunching those numbers this summer, it was somewhere in the seven dollar range. So it probably is around that two dollars. Um, one thing I did, um, Brian Brewer sent me the updated property values. They have the preliminary numbers out. And we did estimate an eight percent increase in our property values. It looks like it's gonna come in closer to five percent. So this amount is going to decrease. We're not gonna be able to prepay a full three million and still keep our mill rate at that nine dollars and twenty cents. So we're gonna see both of those decreasing as far as how much we prepay and how much savings there is.
One of the things that, you know, prepaying as we've done over the years. It allowed us to borrow thirty million dollars and an excess levy of four point six-five million a year. Without raising the mill rate. I mean, we then by having that capacity in there, we could do that without. One of the public would say, well, it's gonna be another three dollars, this, you know, thousand.
So Central had the highest levy rate or had the highest mill rate of any school or it was in top three of every school in the mid in the western that western.
C C C.
The C town eleven.
Yep, it's number three. Probably that's the function of when they when districts have done referendum, because they'll move up.
Well, that's what I thought. I figured our our mill rate shot up when we did the referendum, but historically, Central's always been.
It actually did not shot.
Really high.
Kind of tried to just keep it balanced. Because people don't like, oh, they don't even notice when their taxes go down. So when they go up the next year, like, oh, my god, taxes went up a thousand. So it's. Taxpayers has come to expect the 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 school part of their taxes will be a levy, a steady mill rate. Now, their assessed value goes up, their taxes go up, but it isn't because we've raised our percentage on there.
And I think that was the whole, like, that was one of our main goals in passing this operational referendum was. We didn't want them to see that mill rate keep ticking up, you know? We wanted to keep it level and steady for them.
We, I mean, it's four point, I think it's at four point six-five million. But it it goes up like three hundred and fifty thousand every year, maybe it's maybe more than that.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So it goes up, it started what we needed to fund this year, but next year. Just keep up with teacher pay, at average, we add up to the six point or four point six-five million.
Yeah, because we started at what, one?
One point eight-five, yeah.
Something, I think it was close to two.
And seventy-five thousand step up over ten years, ending at four point eight million in perpetuity.
Yep.
So Derek had asked about this and, you know, it's kind of complex. Of course, went to Jen and um did a terrific job of explaining that. Um by the way, um so really, it's a philosophy by the board. You want to. You know, you see this this as as now, we're saving. On the tax levy, the taxpayers, you know, in the long run, over time, over time of the bond, twenty years. You know, or you could choose to say, you know what, we're not gonna prepay as much debt. We want to save money for taxpayers today. But ultimately not as much in the twenty-year window. So really, it's kind of a philosophy of you wanna save more money now. Per se annually, but less over time or keep mill rate flat. Uh which means taxes might slowly go up for taxpayers, but yeah. Um to see us at nine point two and well, I thought, oh, we're staying steady, but then to see us ranked third was a surprise. So it it makes me wonder. Like, what's everyone else doing, especially those folks that are passing operational referendums every four years? But yeah, that is one reason because we passed a pretty amazing thing in that salary compensation referendum, so.
Isn't the money we're saving getting spent somewhere else, though?
The money we're saving.
Well, like when we're prepaying stuff and we save, you know, whether it's eighteen thousand or a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
We're we're saving money down the road. So by prepaying this past year, one just shy of one point four million. We're not going to have to pay a million dollars in interest down the road. Because we've retired those bonds.
But it's not money, it isn't like we spend it operationally. Those funds can only be spent to pay down the bond.
Yes.
We're not spending it someplace else.
Not to be confused with maybe some of these leases, you may have heard about that where we at the end of the year, you look at the budget, it's like, oh, we've got seventy-five thousand dollars. It didn't get spent because of whatever fuel prices or the weather. Um and it's like, you know what?
That that.
Yeah, now we're like, oh, we're gonna pre we're gonna prepay the lease for next year. That's separate.
Yeah, this is strictly Fund Thirty Nine debt service. Yes.
And it's a little misleading. In that next year, we get some reimbursement of that money that we prepay.
That's when I was rushing the sixty percent. I didn't, I've never seen that on on our statement in a in a Fund Thirty Nine. The like the state, you said that the state will refund six, I was real lost on that.
Your your state aid is based on how much you've spent in the prior year minus a few things, okay? So re- remember a couple of weeks ago when we talked at the annual meeting about our state. Aid increasing from around twelve million to like thirteen, five. I'm just throwing general numbers out there. I can't quite remember exactly. But that's one of the reasons why we're anticipating that big of a jump in our state aid. Because we spent that money this year, the state gives us more aid on it next year.
It's actual hard dollars that come in that funnel into Fund Thirty Nine.
It doesn't go into Fund Thirty Nine. That actually goes into Fund Ten as aid. But now the way the aid calculation works is you have your remedial limit. This is the most amount of revenue you can. Claim based on your number of students. Your state aid comes off there and the rest goes to the taxpayers. So by adding one point five million in state aid in a given year. That's basically one point five million less that's going on that will be on the tax levy.
We don't have to levy for property tax. So we're.
So it's a wash.
Well, not really.
I mean, you're reaching into the pocket to grab for Fund Thirty Nine and you're getting it back.
You could you could.
Yeah.
It's a one-time savings. It can change our philosophy this year in your taxes.
Yeah.
But then, that's it. Then it's done.
One of the things we're doing is we're by prepaying, we're maximizing the percentage of state aid that fund um Fund Ten.
Fund Ten.
Right.
And Fund Ten is specifically allocated to spend funds how?
That's the general fund. So that's where all of our educational operational expenses come out of. Yep. So that piece doesn't go back to Fund Thirty Nine, which is a little confusing. But it helps in the fact that then it's that much less that we are levying on your tax statements in December.
Do we have anything in writing that shows the funds and then what is taken out of those funds? It's a great question.
Um.
Oh, the annual.
Woofer.
Or a meeting.
Yeah.
I hope booklet was all about that. As every fund.
A Fun Ten.
Show description of.
Yeah, I think that probably would be the best reference. Um. Otherwise, if you were looking for something a little more detailed, there is the Woofer accounting book, but that's. That's pretty detailed. I mean, it tells you where every single like. We have a special ed teacher, they need to be coded to this object for their salary, these objects for their benefits, this function. For their, you know, depending on what they're teaching. So it's pretty detailed.
The other place would be the annual audit where there's a section of that is by function. So where we spend money by function. So that would be another place you could. I mean, it's audited, so it's not. Lucy goosey, not that our numbers are, but it's accounting firm has verified that things were in the right bucket and. Where, I mean, I've been on lots of audit committees. We just never have any adjustments, which is phenomenal. Just not a common, particularly as complex as school budgets are and which bucket where things are supposed to be. It really is amazing that every year we have no material adjustments.
Any other questions? On Fund Thirty Nine? Next up is consideration of approval of Stalker Sports floors quote for the middle school gym floor replacement.
So we included, we went out for three quotes. So with our new purchasing policy. If it's under two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, we need to have three quotes from three different vendors. So we did do that. Our purchasing policy also states we need to go with the cheapest quote. In this case, we are not going with the cheapest quote, and that is why we're bringing it to you tonight. Um from my understanding, we're getting a lot of add-ons from Stalker Sports. Um that is is more beneficial than saving a couple of thousand dollars. So. You can see that Stalker's quote came in at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um FLR Sanders was two hundred and twenty thousand. And JW Wood Sports Flooring was two hundred and twenty-three thousand. So they were all within a very. Very small amount of money. So we are asking um for approval to go ahead with Stalker Sports. And maybe Tim or Nick wants to elaborate on what those add-ons are.
So FLR came in, um that's a mint roughing rock with them. They utilize the same design gym floor. It's a scissor lock system. Um they run half-inch scissor locks. Um with Stalker, we got an inch-thick scissor lock, so it's a a better structure. As well as a blower system and humidistats. I've heard conflicting things, take it all with a grain of salt. The other guy's trying to sell me a different product. Say, well, I don't really think that works that well. Doesn't move very that well. I don't see how it can't benefit the moisture issues that we have with gym floors when we do get them wet. Vent it on the other side. I'm not saying we get the same CFM that's being pumped in out of the vent. But I don't see how it can't be a benefit as well as the added structure and given the cost. And our relationship with Stalker, that's what I recommend.
And additionally, um we've worked with Stalker in many projects, many floors, many years. He does our annual maintenance and refinishing. So I think there's a value add there as well. For three to five thousand dollars, that's what.
What portion do we have to cover?
What's that?
Do we have to cover that portion?
Well, I believe.
Correct.
Not those bit.
Yeah, so mint roughing is going to pay.
It's not really apples to apples. That FLR Sanders had a there were extra fourteen grand for the ventilation system. So you could throw that one out because they're high.
And it's thickness of wood, right? You got about a moment.
Right, and then and then from JW Wood, you got a a half inch in from Stalker, you got twenty-five thirty seconds, right? Oh, no, they got twenty-five thirty seconds too.
And the the amount, the exact amount we're getting from mint roughing is two hundred and twenty even?
Yeah, so they have agreed to pay us the amount of the FLR Sanders quote. So we will receive the two twenty, three twenty-seven, eighty-eight from them. We have already received a fifty percent down payment. And I believe the deal was was that the rest comes once the floor is complete. Does that sound? I thought I heard that somewhere.
It's either that or next month.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, whatever little bit we have to pay presumably could come out referendum fund is related to that building.
About the middle school.
Yeah, the middle school, that language is, yeah. Are we gonna do this?
This HVAC related.
Given the cloud, given the product.
That's the problem.
I'd be happy to take that out of my budget, that extra couple of grand to get those blowers to give us the best chance of surviving any water. Mitigating any water damage.
Was thousand six hundred seventy-three dollars, two dollars.
So J-Wood did not have the ventilation system?
No, J-Wood couldn't. Different, it's a different designed floor.
Got it.
Um and you excuse me, I'm a little green with gym floors. I've never worked for a school district, but the got a crash course in the last couple of months.
Yeah.
Um but he gets down to ball rebound and all these different. And then they all disagree on what's best. Um but given our relationship with Stalker. Um and what I can tell, it seems to be the best deal.
So the only only variable with his quote is this concrete may need to be fixed up to thirty-five grand. What's wrong?
So they're basically tacking, the original floor was like a track and cleat system.
Yep.
And when you tack that concrete to the concrete, when they pull that, how bad it's probably gonna be.
Oh, how big it, yeah.
Beyond that, I believe you were reading, is that the FLR quote?
Yeah.
Yeah. So he's also, you know, priming. For if there's any deviation in the concrete, re-leveling, pouring all that stuff for perfect floor. So that that is, I guess, an unknown, but Stalker is not too concerned with that issue.
So it could be, could be.
Could be more because you don't know what until they pull the floor, what the concrete looks like, if there's cracks. That's that's.
You guys could take your best hits, right? On the concrete floor?
Yeah, I mean, for example, filling small epoxy cracks, all that stuff we do.
I wouldn't be too worked up about that.
No, we're not pouring every level in the whole floor.
Right.
That that original floor was tacked directly to the concrete. So if you're designing major deviations, you'd see it in the gym floor already.
Right.
Jen, do you have any idea what kind of uh we put it in the bank? Kind of interest will earn off there, under or two hundred thousand for a year? At five percent.
Uh it's it's close to that right now.
We get get five, ten thousand depending on when they have to pay the second half.
Right.
That make up the.
The difference, yeah.
Uh motion to approve Stalker. Sports floors for the repair.
Second.
Derek made the motion. Brad second. Any more discussion? On favor?
All right.
All right, quotes. Motion carries. Next is consideration of the second readings of board policies C through N.
My changes that I need to know?
Yes, there's a couple.
I have one, I I I'd like to propose that we push the weapons on school premises. To be able to.
Mac just left.
Tis Mac? Mac? Mac?
Can you yell at Macs? Although.
So do you?
To, yeah, to, do, I guess the point being, just with our trap team, the policy states that. You can't transport any weapons in a school vehicle. And I know it's not, but it'd be nice to clarify that.
You're not leaving early.
So policy page thirty-two talks about weapons, Mac and 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 Lance reached out and said, well. As written, it doesn't really maybe cover if we're gonna use trap, you know, shotguns in the school vans. Now, I. Thought that they were the the um shotguns currently were transported in private vans, but. That's what we kind of needed to know. And and even if they are currently, maybe it's good to have that flexibility in our future policy. So your thoughts on that? So that our policy allows for transport of trap team guns in school vans?
Yeah, uh not hauled any yet. We did once because the state did have a thing. Um I found it, state of Wisconsin said absolutely not at all. And then there was a big question with all the trap teams in the schools. And a couple of states lost the battle and they could not tell. The the school, uh support strap, they could not tell them they can't have a gun in their vehicle if it's a school. So the state of Wisconsin said, we're not going down this road. It's up to your school or dropping our thing. So it's up to the school and uh. You get one after they drop it. Otherwise, if you haven't yet, you'd like to, um which is a whole lot easier when I can collect. Um kids and take them to events. Otherwise, it's like you're sitting down, hoping they get their own gun and they don't break down and some people are just punctual and it's other ones. Uh so we're hoping if we can use for, um. Uh Tim and I had talked about it, you know, it's where it's just not even a question anymore. Uh we could do some more. Oh shoots that are not really sanctioned in our uh. In our club, but just fun ones with the kids in that one school. Not in the school vehicle. I don't feel comfortable, I don't like, but you might find something that's a vehicle that makes it safe and hopefully. And if they were in the school van with me that I'm hauling kids to Michigan in, you know, it's kind of nerve-wracking. I don't know what that expensive piece of equipment is being treated like. Naturally, we would just would hopefully get, use the school vehicle, not looking for those school buses. I just prefer to have it clarified so that it's not something somebody can ask about or challenge later.
Right, so um yeah, then recommend that we 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 table that, push it back to next month. So I just, because this is straight from, you know.
Yeah.
The lawyer's stuff as written, when it changes, we bet with him. So and I don't think it's um. Urgent by any means, so pushing back a month would be good.
And if if there's a case that the lawyer.
And if if there's a case that the lawyer might say, like a lockable case, something that the club can buy. That would ease his burden, uh I'm sure we could get a donor to help us buy lockable places.
Well, especially if the states kind of washed their hands of it and left it to the school to decide, I don't. I don't know if that's necessarily required.
True, yeah.
Nice to have, sure, but.
Uh I know uh my nephew's school, uh they just stated that the only, uh their statement on there is, I cannot go into word for word, is. The only time firearms are allowed to be hauled in a school vehicle is for the high school trap team.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was just so that it's there's no question about. Because they have a room that they can section off from their building and lock, and they actually allow them to have. Training in their school, I don't see that necessary, but I think it was just the wordage they were interested in.
And archery is not considered a weapon for this purpose?
Art.
Archery not considered a weapon for this purpose?
We don't have an archery program yet.
Oh, we did, FIAT.
Well, FIAT has them, yep, and and outdoor adventures have them.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know we have kids that are competing at national level in archery, maybe it's not a school sponsor.
I have a cool bet. Big middle school and high school, FIAT, yeah, I all the stuff, yeah, they do.
Try to make it broad enough to cover both.
So we need a motion to table core agenda item D. Motion to table core agenda item D.
Second.
All right, Derek made the motion, Lance second, any more discussion about that? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Quotes, motion carries.
Is there anything else on the second reading?
Changes. Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep, um so second reading, the other one is policy eight thirty and it's not linked for some reason, and I'm not, I can't find mine. Um do you guys have in your packet eight thirty with the red?
No.
I got it right here.
You do?
I see it on you.
Have it?
You have it?
It's, yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay, let me pull that up so you can see, because we're gonna wanna look at it again.
Which ones?
Eight thirty, use of school district property, so um our attorney did.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Uh offer some changes from the first to the second reading. Um. So I wanted to make sure that you all understood what those changes are. So you can see they're highlighted in yellow, I asked Kelly to just keep them highlighted again, so you understand. So again, this is use of district pro uh property, you know, he just, this is very common, um as to what they do usually, the first reading. Um you know, before the first reading, before you can see it, that's why there rarely are changes, but I can't remember why it happened between first.
He's not, he's just been busy and didn't get to it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and you got, and then he makes notes at the bottom kind of as as to why. But this is a good example of this typical um work that our local council does and changes these things. So I don't see anything in here um that, you know, I think is necessarily noteworthy, but I want to bring your attention, anytime I've changed between first, second reading, what they are. Um and then, you know, other than that, uh I would say maybe a noteworthy thing is just our our uh. Original um language and religious organizations, he said we should just strike that from there, and I guess he doesn't have the, you don't have.
You did have those, but I took them off.
Did, but you took them off for this, yeah, and his his rationale, um why? Um because if you start talking about religious organizations, it opens up specifically naming them, it opens up lots of different. Organization, similar organizations, so so let's just keep that out, and it's covered in another policy of ours.
Well, this is pertaining to like kids coming and use the gym or the weight room? Or like organizations like renting space.
Correct, more about our facility use policy, renting or outside organizations using it, correct?
Specific.
Renting or outside organizations using it, correct? Yeah, it doesn't cons um address the educational uses. All right, that, and then I think the other one is the first reading, we have to do the first reading with six seventy one, I believe. Correct? Okay, so nothing else, it's second reading.
I move to approve core agenda items B, C, E through N.
B was Stalker Sports one, right?
Oh, we already did that, sorry.
Pretty good, yeah.
C, C, E, through N.
Second.
Lance made the motion, Jeff second, any more discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Quotes?
Well, I kind of deduce Merkley, we just, we go right down the line, you can see we're eight hundreds, eight hundreds, oh, six seventy one point two expense reimbursement policy. So our first reading um of that, the only, the change is under meal reimbursement, which is kind of initiated from uh. From our conference in Milwaukee last last year, and you know, um all that really didn't apply to the cover, cost of meals in Milwaukee. At least other than McDonald's or Arby's or something, but um so it's just changed, it used to say meals and under meal reimbursement, meals will will be reimbursed up to seventy five dollars per day. With a maximum of thirty five dollars per meal, so we're um. We are suggesting eliminate with a maximum of thirty five per meal and to say seventy five bucks per day. Kind of with, you know, we didn't necessarily want the board or or any particular group to have something different than the rest of the staff, we believe. Uniformity is probably best here, but it allowed us the flexibility, seventy five per day, that way. We wanna skip lunch or do a small lunch and do a nice meal in the evening in Milwaukee. So that's just the first reading and FYI. Thank you.
Then we do have consideration of approval for eliminating the board policy.
And um. That, yeah, is directly tied to um our eight thirty use of district property accessibility, one replaces that.
That's what I was wondering.
And this, this one was more specific, using fees and all that dollar amounts, so.
A dollar. Yeah.
We still have that it under, you know, our operational guidelines, and for auditorium manager uses it the most. It's just not appropriate for board policy because of this specificity.
So I move we. Approve item V.
Second.
Jeff made the motion, Lance second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Quotes, motion carries. Okay, okay, moving on to possible future agenda items. Do you have anything? Then we'll move on to upcoming import or important upcoming dates, so put it in your calendar right now. September eighteenth is the school board meeting at seven. Here at the district office. October thirteenth is school board development meeting at five, and that would be um on Sunday.
On Sunday evening.
October twenty first is a school board meeting at seven.
Is that a Monday?
I don't think so.
That's a Wednesday, this. This uh meeting nominee's on.
Yeah.
It's a Monday, isn't it?
Wednesday.
So the twenty third is a Wednesday and that's um WASB.
Oh, we moved, so we moved the board meeting to the.
To Monday.
Monday.
Because of the Wednesday.
Okay, so that needs to go on your calendars, that could mess people up right there, so October twenty first.
Did Tim tell you to send everything in my work email?
I don't think Tim did.
I don't think.
If you couldn't, I'd be great.
Tim was supposed to do that.
Tim doesn't.
Yeah, Tim does a great job, D Miller five, hey, you are, yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so let's see.
Yeah, everybody that's listening.
Everybody, everybody, uh October twenty first, so that is Monday.
Yep.
Is the next school board meeting.
Okay, I think that's a typo though.
Okay.
Because I have it as October sixteen.
October what?
On my calendar, sixteen.
Sixteen, I thought, did we, I thought maybe we moved it a week ahead.
That makes more sense.
That's what I also have as October sixteen.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Sixteen, okay, so that's just the title. So we have just set the levy that night and we don't receive all of the information until usually later in the day on the fifteenth.
Twenty first.
Perfect timing for you.
So.
You guys think that twenty four hours. What else are you gonna do?
Would it be possible, I think the twenty first would work great, but.
I would rather do the twenty first because I'll be in Kansas City on the sixteenth.
Yeah, it works for me, I can do the twenty first, that's good enough. Yeah, that is the third Wednesday after we're sitting.
Yeah, I don't know, you guys thinking of this month as on the.
Yeah, can you update it to the twenty first?
Okay, so for clarity.
Do we have to vote on that? So now.
I think Eric can can change it, but we don't think it'll, it's more of an, it's just a notice, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be posted.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we're saying is October twenty first is right, we are going to do it on Monday, so.
That's what Jen would like.
That would work out well.
I would like.
Very clear, Lance Kelly.
She's nice. Talk about that.
Nice job.
And then October twenty third, which is Wednesday, is the fall regional meeting.
When Dave brings all the coffee.
At Off Broadway Banquet Center, not the Stella Field.
Oh, really?
Same thing.
It's the same thing as.
Oh.
Sounds better for board meeting. It's fair.
Off Broadway was a party.
Right, so we're good with the upcoming dates, now we will convene to close session, who would like to read that and make votes?
All right, fifteen dash A per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five. Uh one C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data on any public employee over with a governmental body has jurisdiction. Or exercises responsibility, one, consideration of approval of network administrator contract, two, review of superintendent's annual goals.
And all right, so Derek first, Dave second, and then.
Dave second. Aye.
All right.
Okay, so at eight forty three, we are going.